Now you get to fill out all those forms and do all your training. We have various items on the agenda today, once we get through the faculty and parent updates and our ED reports with the various task forces. We're recording out on two complaints and then we'll go straight into governance who also discussed these complaints yesterday. There will not actually be a finance report, but finances are in your packets, so you can review those and contact Tom with any questions. And we will have executive session to discuss pending litigation. And I would also like to note that the meeting is being video recorded by our new, Amsa's new communications manager. But we are still going to thank Stan very much for his volunteer efforts so far. Okay. Are there any? No one is dialing in, right? Yeah. Any questions on the agenda? Just note.
So this now an official recording by us?
It is.
Will it be posted to YouTube as a Hashtag at Amsa?
I don't know, that's for the question. I think so, but it would not be on the same YouTube page because it would be on the school's YouTube, school's page.
Okay, so I think the faculty would find it valuable for some sort of announcement as to how we do take it to be handled, the dissemination.
Okay. So any other questions on the agenda? Anything missing, anything we want to move around? Let me take a look at the minutes from last month's meeting. Scott, you aren't absent, were you? November? Oh, you heard October? October, not November, oh, sorry. So everyone check. So we do not need roll call vote. Rick, would you serve as timekeeper? Please check the votes in particular, others only. There's a couple of votes. Is there any public comment? Okay, all right, then I will take, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the Amsa's exams.
Okay, a second?
May I have a second? I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor, you can raise your hands. Motion passed unanimously, the minutes are approved. There's no public comments, so we will go to the faculty rep update.
I was anticipating the parent rep could go first, I could imagine.
Would you like her to go first?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm a weak person.
Not, there aren't a lot of updates this month, but the one thing that I did want to bring up because it's been brought to my attention by a number of parents, there's continued concern around teacher retention, especially as we're heading into the second half of the year. And I know our meeting in January is the strategic planning meeting and that's all booked up, but for February, if we could have some sort of retention plan in place, or at least that we can discuss, so that as we head into the second half of the year, that hopefully we're not losing as many teachers as we have the last couple of years. That was one thing. The other thing that I was hoping that you could get is, and this is something else that has come up from a number of parents, is a crisis plan. We're not aware of any sort of crisis intervention plan should something happen. Similar to what happened at the end of last year, when we had an issue and news reporters outside the school and the middle school parents were never communicated with, so a lot of them didn't even know what was going on unless they had other school students. So it would be good, given that that was on the scale of minor crisis, when if you think about what the crisis that could come up, I just want to make sure that we have a crisis plan in place so that parents are communicated with, the school has communications and has a process in place to deal with any sort of larger crisis that could occur.
So it's both the internal plan, which may or may not exist, I don't know. But it puts the communication of it to the big risk.
Aspect of it is communication, obviously does. But certainly, there's a plan in place should something bad happen, and I don't even want to start enumerating what bad things could happen. But as an example, two weeks ago, a student was murdered up in Lawrence. God forbid, something like that happens at this school, how are we going to handle it? And let's have a plan in place before something bad ever happens and hopefully nothing bad ever will happen. But I just want to err on the side of the preparedness.
I mean, school has had to be evacuated in the past, this was multiple years ago, for a gas leak or something, I think, so I think it's a reasonable.
If we do touch upon like the teacher retention at some point, my first year on the board, there was a graph that actually had the teacher retentions to roll all of the years. I think that would be helpful.
Okay, that data.
I remember I found that fascinating, kind of interesting to look at.
Those are the two big things from the parent rep update.
Okay, thank you. Tom, faculty update?
Okay. So as has been the case for every B O T meeting, I have a law on the place and I have to try and select what will fit, fit the time appropriately, what to say for another time. Let me begin just by talking about saying that are good, are nice for the faculty to see happening at Amsa. There was the first alumni reunion a few weeks ago, the Alpha class had a reunion, and a fair number of teachers who were from that era, who knew them, showed up, including some teachers who were no longer with Amsa. And it was a heartwarming to see how these people have grown into becoming very promising It would have been nice just seeing some board members there and some administration members there as a tribute to what has been accomplished in Amsa's past. Even so, it was a worthy exercise, and those of us who had the chance to be there are very happy we did. The mentoring program, last time it had been just a launch in its full glory, out of sales, out of the harbor. So now it's getting to the point that people have actually met their mentors and talked to them. They are grateful for having such a program and as it continues to unfold and we see how it takes shape in January and so on, we do, all faculty hope that the newer teachers find this a real asset in their development. I also have a request, since there is no financial report today, a comment or a question I would have asked at that time, I'm going to introduce now, which is, at the first and second board meeting, I requested that the financial report show a separation of salaries from those which are union representative personnel from those who are not. I know this is possible, because after all, this is what was given to the negotiating teams last year. This would help clarify any claims as to where sources of drains of money in terms of salaries are coming from at Amsa. And so I request that that division in next board meeting be done. Okay, what else? In terms of the major issue that's hidden behind the scenes, never going away at Amsa for the faculty, separate from the life of the class and the working students, is the sense that when will my time end? Problem of attrition is, as always, nothing at this. It's never even acknowledged anyway that we can discern from our. It is an abstract issue perhaps to board members, something academic, something that is data on sheet, numbers flowing in and out. What teachers get to see is a real life impact, not only on their lives in terms of loss of colleagues, loss of academic and personal relations that helped nurture Amsa. They also get to see the degradation of the classroom environment. They get to see the impact upon students at having to adjust to just a new type of teacher, a new way of approaching the subject, a new set of expectations, never mind the sense of attachment and broken. This is part of life, but then we don't want it to be so frequent and so common that becomes what students have to face as part of Amsa on a daily basis. There has been huge loss of faculty in the last three years. Natural turnover, as has been phrased in the past by Amsa leadership, is of course natural and it happens. So we're not talking about someone saying, well, time to move on, or someone proving themselves to be incompetent and so on. We're talking about the environment at Amsa simply being something that's become hostile to that teacher for no good objective reason. Their hope of having a career here, of building something that lasts into the future being challenged on a daily basis. Again, I understand these things happen as part of life, but at some point, the cost to Amsa will become so obvious, they'll be very hard to ignore. I think what we are facing for this year is the potential loss of the heart of the veteran teacher corps, which is to stain Amsa for all of the constant flux, the constant ever-changing leadership we've had in the past. Leaders did not stabilize Amsa. Teachers, students, parents stabilized Amsa. The department heads stabilized Amsa. The well-designed ship has engineers who run its field, people maintain its integrity, and it can survive variation in what the captain brings to the ship, but it can't survive the breaking of the hull and the failure of the engines. I understand that not everyone sees this as an issue. There are those who find it even a positive aspect, maybe look forward to it. I would ask however, that this experiment as to what Amsa will become when we do lose the core of the veteran teachers' dynamic, not be taken lightly and without due consideration for what sort of school view will that have on your hands. Now, I was, as I said, many of the issues people had brought me to talk about. The schedule, of course, is one of them, but let me not go into the schedule today. I'll bring it up later in February, see how things evolve. I just want to talk about one thing that a number of department heads and senior teachers asked me to talk about, which is the AP tests. The board is, has concerns as to scores on AP tests and their rise or their fall. It's good when it rises and it's not so happy when it falls. The question that the faculty, and faculty as faculty rep is includes those people labeled as administrators officially at Amsa but who are faculty and who I do represent, that is department heads, is what is the role of the advanced placement program at Amsa? Is it primarily propaganda, window shop? Is it all about having scores that scintillate to the outside worlds of whoever's in charge at the time can read why it's satisfaction at the awards to come? Because I think that is probably part of it. I have no portal with that. Almost all faculty members have no portal with that. But what is to us the main purpose as teachers is how it helps grow the students. We aim at helping as many students as we possibly can to go as far as we possibly can to become as actualizing their potential as they possibly can. So then when they leave Amsa, they've given them their best fair shot at success in the world after. We would like to have, students have the opportunity to take AP tests, even if they had Bs, or even maybe occasionally it was an exception situation, say B minus in the previous course. Because we can judge a student as an individual, not a statistic, and gives them a sense, okay, maybe this is an opportunity that you should have. Is it really about what we showed to the board in terms of some average? You can create an artificial high average by saying, huh, okay, we will not allow so many students to take an AP test. And we require that they must have a certain previous threshold of grade and just trust that proxy as a real understanding of that individual. And others, if they won't be allowed to take an AP test, and then sure we will look better. But where are we then at fulfilling our mission to take children who come here from the world around us, they have the chance through this lottery to come here, and we work as teachers individually and collectively to help them become the best possible person they are for the future? If that's not our aim with this test, with this AP test, then what is it? And we do worry that this is being challenged. I would like to say that the faculty understands that it's tiring and exhausting to have to, have to listen to us complain all the time. So I'd like to say happy holidays to everyone, that we wish the very best for Amsa and for everyone who works there, and hope to see you all even happier this year.
I actually want to touch upon, just one subject on the AP tests. There are some private high schools that are totally getting away from AP classes, and they actually think that the AP classes have been teaching students to the test and not expanding the kids' horizons. So there is a lot of, you know, high schools out there that are actually getting away from them, so I just want to put that out there.
I mean, I also want to say from the board perspective, I think the board has been very consistent in the time that I've been on the board. I understand it may not have been this way the entire time that, of Amsa's existence, but in the time that I've been on the board, the, which is four and a half years now, the board has been quite consistent in doing exactly what, as you're saying, which the board feels it's very important for all, everyone to have the opportunity to take AP classes, I mean, within some limits, right? But that the trends from the board's perspective are an indicator to examine, you know, are, is there anything? If it is because a lot of students who are taking an AP class, who have wanted to challenge themselves and had never done that before, that's a fantastic reason, and that's fine, and then we move on, right? If it's some other, if it's some other thing though, then it is, it is an indicator, we, it's a metric, right? And there are only so many things that we can look at.
Thank you.
Yeah. Oh, I would give a little tiny bit more history for Scott's perspective too, because, and this I know from people before me on the board. My understanding is that the AP program was put in place at Amsa because it was a new school and, you know, colleges really didn't understand the curriculum right, know what it was, and it was a national sort of standard that colleges would understand. And that's a little different than private schools who've been here for, around for a really long time, that the schools know really well. So I mean, it's, it's a very fair point, what Scott's raising, and it's interesting, Amsa's more of them now.
I think Amsa's very well known.
So it's, it is a, it's definitely something to consider. Which we'll get to in strategic planning, but to follow up on what Tom said actually about the alumni reunion, I have in my hand a thank you card from what appears to be the Alpha class thanking the board. It's written for the entire board of trustees and signed by the alumni who attended the event. So I'm going to scan this and send this around to you, because it's actually very nice to have. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the ED report.
Thank you. So first thing I have is the AP scores trend update. So several board meetings ago, I gave a report on the trends on the AP scores over the last several years, and some board members remarked that in some cases, the averages are declining. Roughly 10 out of the 16, some tests, they went down from last year, and then about six of them had an uptick, and then there were a few that just remained steady or didn't have enough past tests to be able to form a trend. So for example, French, it's only been given a few times over the years, and art, 2D drawing, there's a couple of different categories there. The general interest from the board was that there be more detail about where the trend seems to be going and what might be the causes. So I asked the department chairs to take a look at the AP scores for their particular areas, and not all of them have gotten back with a detailed report. I did get a detailed report from a few departments, but some of them are still working on it. But I did give everybody on the board a copy of a document there that shows the AP scores.
Oh, is that what we're looking at?
Yes. It's the one with the green bar, green and blue bar chart there. So this gives a little more detail, and it's supplemented, if you, I can actually get the information for every test going back in great detail, but that would be about 13 pages. So this is sort of the summary sheet. And it shows that in general, the Amsa students' AP scores have remained at a high level relative to both the Massachusetts state scores and then the global scores, because the AP is given in a wide variety of places around the world. It's like, something like 2 million, 2 and a half million tests are given. But here at Amsa, over the years, if you look at the box, well, if you look at the box with the colored bar graph, you can see that there's a general trend downward in terms of the number of students who have scored a 3 or higher, the percentage of students who've scored a 3 or higher seems to be declining a bit. And then if you look at the box, the rectangle on the right there at the top, it shows the total number of Amsa students over the years who have taken AP test and then the number of exams. It looks like the number of exams have been going up the last few years. 2014, about 490, and then 550 the next year, and now 584 the most recent year. So it seems like the number of exams being taken are going up. The number of students taking exams seems to be about the same as it was the year before last. And then the number of students with scores of 3 or higher seems to have gone down a little bit from the previous year, but they also seem to be staying fairly close. So I think that.
This is horrible.
So I suppose, when I asked the department chairs to sort of give their analysis, I got some different things from different chairs, but there were some things which were common to all of them. One of them was that, I guess there was a philosophical shift a couple of years ago with the director before I came on board that indicated the desire to not have the sort of entrance requirements that were previously required. So for example, in, in some departments, it was required to have a certain prerequisite, whether it was a certain grade on the, on the course before the AP course, or perhaps a teacher recommendation in some cases along with the grade. There seemed to have been a loosening of that requirement, and there was, there was a general philosophical change, I think, that meant more people should be having access to the test. So I think the, one of the reasons for the decline in the average scores in a large number of the tests is that the number of students getting ones and twos experienced a bit of an uptick in some of the, in some of the tests. So one of the discussions that's been going on in the department chair meetings is whether it's worthwhile to have a grade or a entrance standard, I suppose, that was more, that is more standardized across the departments. And so there's been discussion about what that grade should be and what role it should play. I know there are different pathways to the APs depending on the department. So for example, in mathematics, there's, there are two levels of calculus you can take, and I think they have two corresponding pathways to get to those calculus AP courses. So I think that the conversation's still going on with the department chairs, but I suppose that in terms of the contributing factors to the decline in the average for the test scores, one would be that there was an opening to more people to take the tests, so a larger number of tests are being taken.
Is that in 2016?
That was in 2015, I think.
Okay.
I think it was a decision made by Dr. DeMello.
May I make a, I believe a terrifying comment here?
Well.
No, you don't want, I won't.
How about wait till I finish, then you can?
Very well.
All right. So another indicator that some of the department chairs brought up was that the test has sometimes changed over the years. So I was told by the science department chair that in 2014, 15, and 13, the biology, chemistry, and physics test had some changes. So this sometimes requires some changes on the part of the teacher in terms of preparation. It might mean that some of the preparation that was previously thought to get you ready for the test wasn't necessary, or had to have a change. One of the things the department chairs also indicated is that in some cases, there could be better teacher preparation for the AP classes, so more courses taken in the summer to prepare the teachers. There are week-long courses, I think, that are given in the summer. Those are some of the things that they pointed out. I think on, on the whole, the larger number of tests taken probably would tend to, and probably less of a standard, a standard for entry to take the test might tend to lower the overall average scores. I think that, I know some department chairs have said that it's helpful to have a student have the opportunity to be able to challenge him or herself and take the test, assuming that there's a real possibility of getting to a 3, 4, or 5, the AP. The college board says that success on an AP exam is defined as a score of 3 or higher. So ones and twos don't really help the student too much, but 3 or above tends to be helpful. And I know a number, at least one or two department chairs said they think that kind of ability to grow, even if you're just going to get a 3, is still something beneficial. And so there's a, that's been part of the discussion. It's also probably worth noting that in our accountability plan, we talk about having 90% of the total number of AP tests taken having a score of 3 or better, so this past year, I think it was. So, this past year, I think it was around eighty-six percent, which was still within a good range, I think, of ninety percent, but that's something that, that's one of the, one of the measures that we're judged by, by the Department of Ed. So, as far as individual tests, there's a lot of data on how many people got fours and threes on Chemistry this year as opposed to last year, and there's all sorts of other, you can go down at a pretty deep level to get that kind of information, so. And that's what the department chairs are looking at, trying to make a recommendation for next year.
Doctor McLeary, could you say more about the teacher preparation that you spoke about that somehow added an factor here?
Well, there's an AP Teacher Preparation Course that's offered, and the school subsidizes that for teachers. I know this past summer, some teachers have taken it.
Is that for teachers teaching it for the first time, or when the, the course, the exam changes?
I think it's both. I think it's for teachers teaching it the first time, and then they can also take them further on in their career to get updates on, if the exam changes.
Has that training changed at all over the last several years?
Well, I was told by one teacher that the, um, the training for, I think it was one of the English APs had changed. So, sometimes it does change. If the tests change, I think that the preparation course changes.
Maybe a comment? No. I guess what I wanted to add was the distinction between taking an AP course and taking the AP test. Taking the AP test is not in our hands. This is done directly with the board, or the college, seminary, college board, whoever is in charge of AP, even our chief of service, it's in the college board.
Yeah, it's college board.
We have, we have quite a few students who take tests without ever having gone through the course. In fact, one of the motivating factors for saying, let's have more students take the course, even if they were unnecessarily the very best of the previous class, is simply because students wanted to challenge themselves in these tests. And so, why not give them a chance to take the course and be as well-prepared as possible since they were going behind our backs and doing it anyway? And, and the flip side, many students who take the course find it a valuable experience in terms of growing in their mathematics, to prepare for the courses we have at, or the courses at Space University, aren't necessarily interested in taking the test. So, we have quite a few students who take the courses and don't take the test. So, the criteria for being allowed to have a sophomore take the course are, is a different set of circumstances, and a decision to be made, well, is John, or is Jane, or do you take that particular test? That's their decision. We cannot coerce them into it. So, when we look at test scores, let's keep in mind that valuing the scores and what they tell us, it's not the same thing as valuing the experience of having that calculus course, having that fit in the course, and what it may mean for the future success in college.
That's pretty much it for the AP.
Are there, does anyone have any other questions about the AP trends?
I'm still a little confused on, do we have prerequisites now to take the course or take the test?
Yeah, we, we do. Now, we do, but there's a variation across departments, and that's what we're trying to standardize.
Uh, Doctor McLeary, are you saying we have prerequisites for taking the test?
No, for taking the course.
No. Just taking the course, not taking the test.
Yeah, we...
We have no right.
Okay, so for, um, so for taking the course, because a student can take whatever, exactly...
No, for, for, right now, for taking the AP course, there are prerequisites. There are grades, and in some cases, the need for a faculty member to recommend. But, what, what the department chairs are trying to do now is make sure that there's a certain regularity. They're trying to make sure that across departments, there's a certain rationality to it.
For, for the course?
Yeah, for taking the course.
But not the test?
Well, the, the test comes after the course.
But anyone can take the test. If I'm, if I'm a student, and they wanna take the test, they can take the test.
Regardless.
Regardless.
Regardless of the course.
Well, yeah, I suppose they could, but whether it's gonna be counted in the school's rating?
It is not gonna be counted.
Yes.
Well, that, that's the whole question, though. That's what we're trying to, we're trying to get to the point where the entrance, or the requirements for the course at the school are regularized, so that there's some rationality to it. So, it's not necessarily different from one department to another.
Doctor McLeary, are you saying...
Well, let, let me finish. I think it is, it is my report after all. So, the, the...
Yes, it is.
So, the point I'm trying to make is that, right now, the department chairs are, are discussing how they can best make a rational approach to how the AP courses are entered into by the students. Up to this point, and starting a few years ago, I was told by the department chairs who've been here for a while that initially, there was a grade that you had to achieve in your, in certain courses before you could enter the AP. That changed a couple of years ago, and so, we're taking a fresh look at that and trying to determine what the best way forward is. And that's where we are right now. And, of course, because the AP scores are part of the school's Accountability Plan, we have an interest in making sure that we're reaching certain levels that we've told the Department of Education we're gonna reach. And I think the, what part of the conversation that's going on now is trying to find a balance among the department chairs between the desire to accommodate a legitimate need for students to grow and be stretched through taking these kinds of advanced courses and the corresponding test, and make sure that we don't have a situation where people are taking the whole course and only achieving a one or a two, in which case, perhaps, that wasn't the right course for them to begin with. Maybe there's a better course that challenges them, that's a better fit, but doesn't, you know, waste the time, really, of the people that are in that course that have the capacity to get threes, fours, and fives. And it's that kind of a balance that they've been discussing. It's not that they don't see the value of students being able to have this growth opportunity, it's just where are we gonna strike the balance, so that the different, you know, needs of the school are met adequately. That's what we're trying to get to. That's what they've been talking about.
Doctor McLeary, you use the word rational for a regular standard across the different departments. The word rational or regular are not the same. So, regular tends to imply a kind of, in this context, a kind of uniformity standard. And that would be rational if you assume that the criteria for taking a course are something that are objectively transferable in the same way to all disciplines. In the context of my experience at AMSA, talking to department heads in all fields, it's, it's not been in the past something that has been evident, departments have to forge for themselves a sense of what is necessary in certain courses. It may well be rational. I would be interested in hearing, what is your argument for saying that it is rational?
Well, I don't, I think I've said enough about AP at this point. It's, it, the purpose of giving the report is to go from one topic to another, it's not to have a debate. But, the, the debate is ongoing in the department chair meetings, and certainly, they're taking into account, through their individual departments, the experience of the teachers as well.
So, just, you see, I've been knowing at the last meetings, we had a lot of concern that the AP scores had trended down. And I know, I've heard several of the explanations, and what the investigations have led to this point, but I guess my sense is that, as you said, it's not closed, because we're not at a point of being able to definitively say that it's because we had students who typically, in some cases, didn't take the exam, but they still took the course. So, it, it feels like there's still a piece of data out there that, that we need to hone in on, so that we can have a definitive answer, because we're, clearly, we want to ensure that the scores do not continue with this trend.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's the reason, that's just part of our Accountability Plan.
That's right.
So, somehow, it's, you need the next step of this to ensure that we're on the right path here.
Yeah, I think there are a number of factors that contribute to it. I don't think it's any one factor, and I think it can vary across departments, because the entrance requirement, or the selection requirement for taking it varies across departments, which is why we're trying to get something that's a little more standardized, and we're also...
When you say take the course?
Yeah, take the course, right. And in some cases, students who didn't take the course but took the exam received a very low score, which pulled down the average. So, there, you know, there are a number of factors involved, but I don't think any one can be pointed to as the definitive one. I think the change in philosophy I alluded to a couple of years ago probably did have an effect, because it seems to correspond roughly with the decline. But, you know, I, I think we're, we're just trying to come to a balance, so that students who have the, are given the opportunity to have this challenge and this growth, students who are clearly prepared and are going to be on track to get a four or five, have that opportunity, and that there's certain, a certain standard that all the department chairs can agree on, taking into account the different pathways that you arrive at these courses, which are different, as Tom mentioned, they're different in departments. So, maybe in, you know, the Calculus AB and BC, you have different pathways, and maybe that has to be taken into account when you look at the selection process. You know, maybe you need a, I don't know, I'm just saying, you know, off the top of my head, maybe you need this grade and a prerequisite to get into this AP, and this one for that one. So, that's why there has, there's, there's discussion among the department chairs, because they're trying to come to some kind of consensus.
So, Randy, Molly, this is an item in that next meeting, you're following me, maybe a couple of meetings out, we come back and revisit basically what you just said, to see where we're at now among the two of you.
I do think it's important to note, yes, I, I put that on the agenda. I, I think it's important to note that that trend was largely driven by the board. It was probably a board discussion in about the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen timeframe, of really wanting to ensure that as many people could take AP courses as possible. So, yes, I mean, that there is a, there is an accountability measure on the number of, you know, this is a three plus, that is one of them, but there's also an accountability measure on like the number of students or...
Yeah, the number of students who take one between the grades nine and twelve.
Yeah, the number, like, to make that number as large as possible. So, you know, those kind of go in opposite directions. But, that's, so that is the balance that needs to be struck, I suppose.
Except this one, we're pretty much finding a super long...
Okay.
May I briefly add one point here? See, the, the metric is intended to measure something.
Right.
And that, that something is, is what's missing, at least in my perspective. I hear you say something is missing. It's not so much the metric, it is a board, it's a board's decision that, when it measures academic program success, how is it measuring? How, how is it defining that? And so, this gets back to a little bit about what Tom was saying, is that when you look at AP scores, are you trying to, are you, is, is goodness in AP scores a high score? Or is goodness in allowing for lower scores in order to allow for exploration? And that's a little bit, to me, what's missing here is the discussion from the board's perspective about how it's going to measure faithfulness to the charter and academic program success, and saying, this is how the school is supposed to carry this out. Obviously, that's not exclusively a board discussion, because it, it clearly involves the administration and the faculty as well, but there is some element of the board to have that discussion. If we sit here and say that, you know, the AP scores are going down, I'm hearing implicit in that, well, that's a bad thing, and I'm not sure we've decided that that's a bad thing.
No, I don't think that's true. I think it was just, it was just to say, let's take a look at it. I mean, to me, this data I find very interesting. The number of exams has gone up, that is a very, very good thing. That, to me, you know, completely counter, counter weighs the fact that there's a tiny drop in the scores.
Okay. So, so how do we know that that's a very good thing? I mean, I happen to agree with you, but what, what makes it a very good thing?
Yeah, I think, I think your point is well-taken. You know, the, the, I think what makes it a good thing would be the judgment that the more students who participate in this AP exam, the better that is for the students as a whole, because in general, we want them to be challenged and stretched and have the opportunity to grow and things, things like that, of that nature. So, if that's, if that's a good, that the more students who get exposed to this exam and have the opportunity to take it, if that's a good thing and a measure of real success, then so be it. But I think it has to be balanced with the achievement that you register on the test. So, you know, as, as the AP, the College Board says, success, they define it as an exam score of three or higher. So, there was a rough consensus among the department chairs that that, they agreed with that. They said success would be reg, would be allowed to be three or higher. So, if you have a growing number of students getting ones and twos, that's an alarm, you gotta look at that. Maybe they would be better using their time to take some other course that might allow, challenge them, but challenge them at a level they could actually succeed and grow in. And that's where the debate's been, so, I, I think in...
Except that if they're getting into a new area, maybe they're better served by, by, by spreading themselves into a discipline that they would not otherwise have exposed themselves to, even if it, even if it ends up being a one or two score. And that's where, you know, we're sitting here talking about two distinct things. The, 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 the taking of the exam, which I, I'm still trying to get my arms around why that is a good thing, of taking of the exam as contrasted with of taking the AP class.
Well, in the vast majority of cases, they're the one and the same. If you, if you take, took the exam, then you took the course. There, there are relatively few students who've taken the course without having taken, I'm sorry, take the exam without having taken the course. When I talked to the department chairs, they said that number is small compared to the overall number. So, anyway.
Okay. Thank you. We've spent some of that...
So, anyway, so the ED Advisory Group update, as I mentioned previously, we're working to form an ED Advisory Group. The purpose of that is to allow another area of input, or vehicle for input, so that the director can receive input from the different constituencies in the school. And so, recently, the Communications Manager sent out a call for interest in that, and people have applied, and so, we're, we're currently collecting those, and we should have that up and running by middle of the month of January.
Did you get a lot of applications?
We did. We got a fair number from parents, I think in the neighborhood of twenty or so, and also number from faculty and administration, students. So, yeah, it's gonna be interesting. It's a, it's been billed as a pilot, and we'll see how it goes. But, we're going to have a monthly meeting, and there'll be a specific topic where we'll talk about a solution for that particular topic. The GE Partnership Update, I asked the Science Department Chair to give me some feedback on how that's, how that's looking. There were three areas he was looking at for the partnership with GE Healthcare, which is right across the street from the school. One is a tour of the GE Labs for the AMSA students in February, that's still being arranged. We haven't set, we're waiting to hear back from GE about what date. Another component was having guest speakers from the GE Scientist Pool to come to the classes and speak and give presentations. We've been told by GE that that, there won't be any progress on that until after the holiday break. And then, also requesting possible internships. GE's told us that that's going to be difficult, because there have been requests from a number of schools, and students have to be at least eighteen, so that was a little bit disappointing, but we're still pursuing it. Right now, the ball's really in GE's court. The Science Department Chair's recently contacted, contacted there again, and we're waiting to hear back from them.
We have similar, just to let you know, we have similar laws, similar policies around the age eighteen for all, actually, and has to do partially with liability and partially with employment law, so, I'm just saying, I'm not sure that that's something really that they can do around themselves.
That idea of a board thinking was that we may have some seniors who are at least eighteen, they might be eligible.
Yeah.
And I think some of the thinking was even around potentially some of our alumni. So, we were looking beyond just the, you know, students who, we weren't seeing eighteen as a barrier necessarily, but we needed to think about another way of at least exposing AMSA students to the potential of internships that did make that criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
If we can continue... If we can continue to go along those lines, I think maybe all.
Yeah. And I know Dr. Jurey is thinking that way. The last thing I have on the list here is M C A S testing update. The Department of Education has decided that they're going forward with computer-based testing for the M C A S. And so that means that we'll, we'll have to eventually be able to have sixth, seventh, eighth, and tenth grade and then ninth grade for the biology take the test on computers. So the implications.
Is that for this spring?
No, this spring, they're, well, they're asking us to provide a computer-based testing for a minimum of one class of the eighth grade. So we can actually at least see how it works. And then next, the following year, they want us to be able to have it for.
So it's phased in?
It's phased in. Just, so this spring, we can have it for just one class of the eighth graders to get a sense of how it works. And we're planning on using our Chromebook carts for that. And then the following year, we'll have to have a, a plan for transitioning to. Let me put the list here. Okay. Seventh grade in spring of 2018, followed by sixth grade in spring 2019. And then the idea would be that I think everybody, all the grades will have to be doing it by 2019. Is that correct?
Not the science, not the ninth grade science.
Ninth grade biology?
The ninth.
Ninth grade biology, yeah. They won't have to.
Not yet.
Okay, good. All right, so.
Six, seventh, eighth would.
Yes, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then eventually, of course, tenth in 2019. So we'll have to make a plan for, you know, we can, we have computer labs, but the computer labs are also being used for computer science classes. So that's the challenge. Will probably require a budget change to try to.
Very significant.
Yes, significantly.
Now, will the students receive training on how the testing works on the computer? Since they've never done that before, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the technology to get in the way of the testing in terms of results, I guess.
Neither you nor the D E S E.
Yeah.
So that's why they're asking us to phase it in.
Okay. So there would be a plan in place not only to acquire the tech, the appropriate technology, but also to train the students on the technology in terms of being able to take the test online?
Right.
Practice tests or something?
Yeah.
Well, so from a technology perspective, that would, that would necessitate having the technology available not only for the testing.
Right, but pre.
But before, yes.
Without preparation.
Yes.
That's it.
All right. Thank you. So we'll move on to chair business. So January planning meeting preparation. So Rick and I and Dr. McLeary have been meeting with Board on Track and with Marcy Cornell Fies, who's actually the founder of Board on Track. And she will be our primary, she will be our facilitator and she's our primary person that's, that's involved in planning this. And we talked about how to set up the, what we're trying to achieve and what we're, what we want to get out of it. The, so just the outcomes that she's written down, this is really what we're aiming for, an affirmation of the organization's mission. So when they do these, they usually, you know, blow everything up and say, okay, let's look at the mission. And we felt that was not necessary at all, that in, there's general alignment. Everyone understands the mission and is in agreement that this AMSA's mission should be what it is. So she just mentions that we'll affirm it. And then a couple of things. A big sense is a sense of what wildly successful looks like for board members, the E D and the senior staff, right? Wildly successful is the word that is the phrase saying that she uses in the, you know, three years from now, so that we can all sort of dream big. If AMSA is wildly successful, what does that look like? And that drives, it will elicit from all of these groups what, what the core values really are, like what pieces are most important. And then the, I think the more important pieces are understanding how aligned trustees are, understanding how aligned the senior staff is, and understanding how aligned everybody is. And then the goal of the meeting would be to come out with a shared vision for where, where we would want the organization to be in three years. This is the beginning of a longer planning process. This is a five hours, you know, we've got five hours in January. Oh, we're moving locations, by the way. We're going to be having our planning meeting at the Hampton Inn because it's right across the street and new and nice. So we won't be at the Best Western. And, but it's still the, you know, eight to one o'clock on that Saturday. And so in that five hours, there's only so much that we can handle. And the idea is that we will then continue on. There will be opportunities, and Liz asked me a question, thank you for that, for outreach to additional stakeholders. So that comes later in the process.
Just to clarify, you meant Hilton Garden Inn right across the street?
Oh, yeah, sorry, not Hampton Inn, the Hilton Garden Inn, yeah. The one that's right across the street. Hampton Inn, Hilton Garden Inn, they're on about the same. So the first piece of it, though, is, you know, she asked me, she asked Rick, you know, do we, do we think the trustees are aligned? And actually, my answer was, I have no idea. We've never really asked this question and phrased it in this way. And so that's why the survey that went out for everyone, they're really looking to get that back before the holidays. So I sent it to you a couple of days ago, I think it's the twenty second. Hopefully, you at least looked at the questions, so it's just one page, and then think about what the questions are.
So that brings up a suggestion.
Okay.
If you could send out the questions ahead of time in just a text. Because when I went in, you know, I wasn't prepared to fill it out because, you know, you, you get just a.
You don't, it's actually, I know exactly what you're saying. But if you look, I could send it around. But it also, if you go in and the first thing, it'll pull up all of them. It's not like a one by one by one.
You put in your name and your email address. And it pulls up the questions on that first page, it's one page. You could actually screenshot it and print it out.
Absolutely true, you could do that. Or you could send it around a Word document that had the questions there. Or an email that had the questions so that people consider them before they walk in. Because I went to, I went to go in and, you know, I was like, oh geez, these questions I'm gonna have to think about.
Yeah, you have to think about, right.
So my point is, is to go in there to get the questions. So acknowledging that you could get the questions by logging in, let's also acknowledge that you could send them around and then people could be considering that over some period of time.
Yeah, they do need to be considered over some period of time. It's not the sort of, there aren't questions that you could answer.
They are not, they're, it's not, I mean, they're good questions.
Yeah, you just need to think about it, you need to think about it.
But you're definitely gonna need to think about it.
Yeah, and you can't just like log, you know, don't do this. I think I said, send them in by December twenty second. Don't, don't look start on December twenty second at six P M. You can't do that. I mean, you really have to like go now and think about it for a couple of days because the questions are, you know, it's not sort of gender, date, birth stuff that you can answer very quickly. It's, they're substantive.
I would say they're very thoughtful questions.
They're, I think it'll be very interesting, right, to see.
When is that going to get shared with us? In other words, everybody's sort of inputs collectively?
Certainly by the January board meeting and potentially before. So they actually said it really depends on how aligned we are. Like their whole, the rest of the process is going to be, and if there's any other pre-work that has to happen, is going to happen after they get this first set of data. Because they'll know then, right? Oh, do we have eleven trustees who feel the same, one way and one person who doesn't? Or do we have, you know, three, four, or five? I mean, is it completely disparate? Is the, is the school on one side and the board's on a different side? Or is every, you know, ninety percent, eight percent of everybody's all the same direction? It's gonna be different.
Why, why not just share the, that whether there's alignment or not alignment? I mean, that might be of interest to the board in this part.
Yeah, no, it would be. Yeah, we would certainly get it before the meeting. I just don't know when in the process and before the meeting. Because I just don't, they don't know what sort of, after January third, between January third and January twenty eighth or twenty ninth when we meet, what exactly is gonna happen in that time.
The plan is to do it before the.
You get some, yeah, just to get some general sense. They're gonna summarize it in some way so that we would know. There's probably one more round of pre-work, I think. Okay, so are there any other questions like that, I mean, process questions? I think it'll be good because obviously Board on Track has, has a lot of experience facilitating retreats like this for charter school boards nationwide. But also because Marcy herself was involved with Julia Sigalovsky at the founding of AMSA in particular. So she's familiar with, at a very high level, with what the role of the school was when it was founded. Okay, task force updates. Unfortunately, Allison could not be here again today. So we'll have to defer that update on special education. Regional issues.
So, so as a last, I made no progress in the last meeting. Just as a reminder, the last meeting, I said that I was gonna try to create a draft report to the board, coordinate that with the E D and with the members of the task force, of course, submitting it to the board. And this would be a set of recommendations around issues like data being tracked, how, number one, how we might frame regional issues. And then three specific actions, we had some specific actions to recommend, many of which Dr. McLeary said that he was prepared to take on. So again, the idea is I need to finish that up, coordinate with Dr. McLeary and with members of the task force. And then I think I'd like to submit that. My, my plan is to get that done certainly before the, before the January meeting.
Yeah, it'd be useful just to have it.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions on that? Rick, climate?
So, since the last meeting, we had a round two of department heads. We typically have them with faculty, employees, and teachers once a quarter. I'm sorry, parents once a quarter. This is, I don't think we will, we will have, I think there are two department heads, but they did have an opportunity to attend the ones until we had it. And one of the big things there is also, just like with some of our other stakeholders, they don't necessarily understand the role of governance. This is administration, so it's an opportunity for that clarity to be there. And also just for them to share things that are working well, where things, where they have concerns, et cetera. Many of the themes were very consistent with some of the other roundtables we've had before. And I think one item that also was brought up was similar to what I had parents recently because of having a crisis plan. That I think was something that we all started to hear with this. I think that's about it. Anybody else want to contribute?
I think the only other one that I would add is communication. This is a theme that we heard in past sessions in the S M N network, exemplified in particular roundtables, just overall communications among the faculty with administration, just an area that we continue to see as a need for improvement.
Rick, can I ask you a question? Did I do correctly, you said that we don't think there would be other roundtables with subdepartment heads?
I don't think they necessarily would be at the same frequency.
The reason why I ask is, two different department heads spoke to me afterwards, said that they have value to experience very much, and they wanted to relay my sense, relay from them to you their sense. And one said, it was a very useful discussion, that he felt that they just scratched the surface and he was looking forward to the chance to have further such events. So I know that frequency can, there's no reason why it should be a certain frequency, but I would say that the sentiment of the heart of the department heads is that it's not being a one-off.
Okay. Thank you. So I think we'll try to determine what the best frequency is. I will share, I think that's a ways into it. Another thing I was gonna mention is shortly I will be sending out a request for people to sign up for roundtables for this end of the year. Please do sign up. Hopefully, there's enough notice. What challenges, from a time perspective, it is just challenging to, for board members to attend. So hence, there is that challenge of having, you know, department heads one quarterly. But I think we'll try to take it offline, try to figure out what the frequency would be itself.
I will say, just having been to several of them, both on the, on the faculty side as well as the parent side, they're extremely valuable. So I think as, you know, as many of us that can attend, we really should because they truly are, there's a lot of good discussion that will take place in those. So I just encourage everybody to get to at least one or two.
I think, I think most, I think most board members have been at least to one or two, which is much appreciated. And to your point, a strong move would make most sign up for upcoming months.
Yeah. The timing is just tough, right? Four thirty is very tough when people work in Boston. So now we'll move on to the complaint updates. Rick, you're up again, Rick and Liz.
I will try to keep this brief, then we went through quite a bit of detail yesterday. But, and I think we'll, we'll share more about this particular complaint, not this coming month, but the following month. So there was a complaint raised around, this complaint actually had five concerns associated with it. These concerns actually were part of a letter of concern to D S, which has actually been closed by D S. In those, in short, there were a series of issues. One had, one set had to do with requests for information from the school. Another set had to do with getting services from S P E. And another set had to do with allegations of bullying by teacher to a student. This all is from, within one complaint. And what we found from an investigative perspective was that, yes, this, the school was not in compliance for four out of the five items that were part of the concern, which is what D S found also. But once the D S letter of finding came to the school, the school did attend to all the issues. However, in, during the investigation, what we did find were there were, there are opportunities for improvement process-wise, and that is under the purpose of the board, to improve certain processes, due diligence, et cetera. And so we had a meeting during the conference yesterday where we went through that letter of complaint and our findings. And we came up with a series of, I should say tentative recommendations that we need to be more aware of. Examples of recommendation, and we will, we'll talk more deeply about that in more depth in February, but examples of recommendations are, for example, when a request comes into the school, particularly when it's of a critical nature, there needs to be some mechanism, not just people, but some system or some, some process that can ensure that a particular request has been actually accepted, that it is underway in progress, that it's actually closed, and it's closed in a timely way. And beyond that, that there's some mechanism to, if you will, a dashboard that's periodically reviewed with board, with the proper committee, to make sure things are actually functioning properly from a, especially from a board duty of care. So that, that's an example of one. Another series has to do with making sure, there is a lot of teacher training, but there should be certain types of training that may be lacking today and to make sure those are addressed, particularly in terms of bullying, but, but teacher bullying, I think some of these are being put in place, but we just want to make sure those are complete. And then a third area has to do with, for certain critical positions, making sure that, and this comes under training, but it goes a little beyond that, that they're. and this comes under training, but it goes a little beyond that, that there are proper races in place. That is to say, an understanding of what the roles, accountabilities, consulting role, or informing role of certain positions is. So for example, if, or if HR should or should not be involved if there's a bullying, if a certain department should or should not be involved in an application. So those are the nature of the recommendations. Again, there's more work to be done with governance and with administration ultimately, in terms of some work done in February.
Do you want to vote on just the complaint part of itself to vote, to close that out?
Yes.
Because the recommendations or governance matter.
I'm sorry.
The recommendations or governance committee matter.
Yes, so I apologize, I'm not sure what the proper terminology is to, to make that request, to close out.
I guess it's whether we accept the task force findings, right? It's whether the board accepts the findings of this, of your specific, the specific complaint on these five things was that you found, you agreed with DEES that they were out of compliance, but the school has taken corrective action, and so they're currently, they're, it's closed, right, from that perspective.
Yes, that is correct, yeah. Wait, wait, yes, and so from our perspective, the investigation is actually.
So, excuse me, so I, I heard about the, the special education thing. What I didn't hear about was the bullying, maybe, maybe I missed it?
Oh, I'm sorry, so there was a complaint of bullying.
Right, by a teacher.
By a teacher. And so in terms of non-compliance, DEES found that there's a series of, there were a series of items that the school ideally should have done from an investigation perspective, and a few other aspects. Following the letter of finding that DEES sent back to the school indicated those gaps, the school in that, in fact, did follow up. They did a, a full investigation, a very thorough investigation from, to determine whether bullying had or had not occurred. They determined bullying had, had not occurred. And the process that they followed was correct, appropriate in that context. I will share that one aspect of this is, from a governance perspective, we need to make sure that the proper process was followed in terms of the investigations done by the school. We can't necessarily determine whether the conclusion they made as to whether that bullying actually occurred based on the findings of internal investigation are actually correct, because that's not our purview. Our purview is to make sure that the process of the investigation was correct, and from our perspective it was. Ultimately, the, the, for example, when the, the internal investigation occurs, whatever those findings are, they're given to the ED, and then the ED makes a determination whether that, those findings fall into the category of bullying or not.
And so who, the board has no role in, in evaluating that process?
No, we evaluate the process, and the process was thorough. It was, that all due diligence was followed in the process of that investigation by the school. We don't make a determination though whether the conclusion is correct. If, whether it's the client is bullying.
So for me.
And, and we, and we, and we, in fact, I know I spoke to colleagues who did the due diligence, that is not our role.
Yeah, for me to vote to close this, I would need you to just tell you which, your five, explain which five and.
Oh, yeah, maybe.
And what you, what your findings were for the five. For, for us to close it, I would think that we would need to know, have that information. Exactly.
So the first concern was AMSA did not respond to parents' request for a neuropsychological evaluation, a reading evaluation of course. DEES said that had not occurred, that the school, then as a result of that letter of finding, did provide instance to the parent. Concern two was AMSA did not provide a qualified reading teacher as part of the student's IP. I won't, if you wish, I can go into detail slide then, or not.
No, I don't think that's.
Okay, DEES closed on, the, the school, I'm sorry, DEES found the school was not in compliance. The corrective action was taken by the school. Concern three was that the student's confidentiality was violated. A teacher had spoken about a particular, that particular student in a public setting using their name. That was the allegation. DEES found that was, there was not actually a violation of the privacy of the student, because students' name actually had not been used. So there, there was no non-compliance, or there was compliance.
Sorry, I'm sorry, the, the name was used or was not?
Was not actually, it was found that student's name was not used.
Okay.
A, a, so there was not an issue of non-compliance. I'm sorry, it's a little bit. Concern four, AMSA did not provide a requested Lexia, or requested Lexia data to the parent. Lexia is a program used for reading. And in fact, DEES found the school, school was not in compliance. After the school received the letter of finding, they in fact did provide the information. And then concern five was AMSA did not respond to reports of bullying of a student by staff members. Similarly, DEES found the school was not in compliance. After the school received the letter of finding, they did in fact do due diligence, investigate the bullying.
How is the school, how is the school not in compliance initially in DEES's perspective?
That they had not done a, a proper investigation. So, and we, and we reviewed the votes of the investigation.
And then this is all to go to governance to make sure there's going to be policies in place so this stuff doesn't happen again?
Or recommendations, yes.
And that's the whole idea around the recommendation that we're making, that if there's a way, you know, a way to log complaints and then monitor them to make sure that they get closed out, there shouldn't be a situation where we're not in compliance in the future.
Exactly. So ultimately, there are approximately half of those recommendations come out of this. Those recommendations are not part of the investiga, as part of the findings document, because if it is, the investigators cannot make recommendations, recommendations have to be logged. So from our perspective, the, the investigation is closed, and I confirm that before it's. Are there any other questions on this?
Okay, then we need to have a motion to accept the findings.
Yes.
I have a second motion.
All right, all in favor? Thank you very much, Rick and Liz. I know this was actually, it took you a very long time to get through this. It has very, it has a lot of pieces. I, I think that, well, we're about to go on the other one, right? But I just want to, I want to say that when, when, when the board does these investigations, it actually takes a very long time because a, a number of people are interviewed over time. So it, it does take very many months to sort of untangle all the various pieces. So the second complaint was a civil rights, allegations of a civil rights violation, so Ev?
So this is the second complaint which we actually viewed in governance. At the governor's meeting yesterday, and Paul didn't just mention, this was a situation where the parents actually questioned whether the civil rights of their student had been violated by administration. Pauline and I were the assigned task members to this particular complaint, and spent quite a bit of time in going through and actually conducting the investigation with discussions with the parents, administration, and quite a few stakeholders that were involved, so that we could get a clear understanding of actually what had taken place, what the actions were, and a number of discussions with that. Out of that, our conclusion was that there were no charter or civil rights violations that had taken place at this time. Along with that, though, there were recommendations from governance to the board, which accepted, accepted by the board, ultimately then go to the administration. And in particular, the very first one being that governance committee is recommending to the board that the administration and faculty undergo training, or in actual, in this case would be additional training, in the area of gender identity and understanding the various implications and ramifications that are tied to actions and decisions that change this area. One of the comments that we understood from our governor's meeting was that faculty and this administration also had actually been through a, a training in that area, not last year, but I think two years ago, and was, was quite comprehensive and very good training. But since that time, as I understand, we've actually hired about 50 new teachers since then. So we've got almost a third of the teachers or so that have not been through this type of training before. And so we are recommending governance that, to the board, that we have the faculty and administration go through this same type of training again, whether it's with the same individuals or the same organization. But that training at a high level, we definitely believe needs to take place. The other recommendation from governors to the board is that, really is from a process standpoint, when we looked at various documents, in particular, let's say student registration, there are areas which you need to identify who the parent is or who the guardian is. And current AMSA documentation, at least in one or two documents, doesn't necessarily reflect the most current information where it comes, when it comes to, in some cases, being gender neutral. And so the question is that, a recommendation from governors to the board is that administration take a look at the current forms that we have in place where there's a need for a parent to self-identify, and that we have the most current terminology or wording for those categories. In some cases, it may be gender neutral categories.
So can I ask this procedure, so we need to vote on closing the complaint? Do we vote on the recommendations also?
Actually, we kind of, that's why I put governance right next to it. Let's vote on closing the complaint, and then we'll talk about the recommendations under, sort of, governance piece, right?
So we need to.
But, does anyone have questions about the complaint and the investigation?
So the complaint was a civil rights.
Allegations of a civil rights violation.
And it was found to.
That there was no violation.
There was no.
So have we determined why the training, the initial training wasn't adequate? And why we're needing additional training?
It's extremely gray. That's what we really, and that's actually in this case why this took so long. So the laws came out, laws changed in 2012, and then, and then DEES issued guidance, and there's guidance, there's law, all of this is very new, and I think it's just extremely confusing, so it is not clear cut. So it would be helpful for the sort of, a lot, there's a lot of misinformation. What we found was that across all, of various people, including the complainants, there was misunderstanding of what the laws and versus the guidance.
So would this suggest that this ought to be part of, not just retraining in a specific example, but a general, part of the general professional development?
Potentially.
I think so.
Potentially.
My recommendation would be that we also wait until there's enough clarity on it that we can give fruitful training. Because at this point, the attorney general is still looking at some of the implications of the law and how it's going to be put into effect, particularly as it pertains to the use of facilities in schools. So I think there's, you know, some need to get further clarity before, because that's one reason why it's such a gray area. Because there's a distinction between guidelines, regulations, statutes, you know, these are not all synonymous terms, so.
Yeah, we got to vote on the complaint itself.
Timing standpoint, do you have a motion to close out the complaint?
Someone else has any other questions?
Yeah, I, I motion that we close it.
Okay, they accept the findings.
Accept the findings.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, that was, the motion passes humanely. Okay, so now we're moving on to governance.
And actually, the majority of our governor's meeting actually pertain to discussions of the complaints. We had one or two other items, sort of framing principles from a board perspective, which we agreed to discuss that at our January planning meeting. So that as well as, I think, our board metrics, we will discuss that at our January planning meeting. All of our meetings we spent on going through these complaints.
Yeah, so you want to talk about the recommendations, I mean, the two recommendations?
Do you recommend them now, or to put forward for a vote? Or would Dr. McClure recommend that we gather more information on that?
Yeah, so we should discuss.
So what's our process on a governance standpoint?
Yeah.
We can't make, the board can only make recommendations.
Right.
So.
So is your recommendation to put forward a vote, is my question?
So I guess.
No, we're saying we can only, we can really only recommend to the school that, that these actions be taken.
Just to encourage you, from a procedural perspective, so when governance has a set of recommendations, do they bring them to the board?
Yeah.
And then does the board vote to approve that the recommendations should be brought to the administration?
Yeah, that's, that's the procedure, right, so.
So in this case, two recommendations that I previously spoke about. I think we're still looking to recommend those recommendations, but the details of how they would actually be worked out and offside in the administration.
Right.
Two recommendations, one, additional training, which I spoke about earlier, so I'm not going to repeat that. And also the, the forms, some of them are going to be online or hard copy, making sure that the categories where parents or guardians need to self-identify reflect the most current wording and terminology that's being used today.
And also that we make the forms say primary guardian slash guardian, and secondary parent slash guardian, because they currently, some of them say mother and father.
Yeah, I really can ask this question, I just, I want more clarity. The training you recommended is for who?
Faculty and administration.
Faculty and administration, probably.
And would be, it's not just one-off training. It's training that's put into some, some type of training cycle that faculty and administration would repeat.
Like every two years?
Over time, like over, yeah, whatever that time period is.
Given the continuity, I think you probably need to do it every year, just because the, the laws are changing year over year.
So our role would be to make the recommendation, I mean, that from an administration standpoint, to check the administration, determine what the appropriate frequency would be for that training, and how often.
Well, we could make the recommendation, to Lucy's point, we could make the recommendation that it's, it's done on a regular basis.
Whatever that is. We still look at the administration, you know, what regular is. So can I get a motion to?
I got a motion to accept it.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'll leave my last call on this.
No, because it's, yeah, yeah, you're not. Okay, thank you. We've got Tom abstaining. All right.
Well, he's not abstaining, he can't vote.
Well, that's what it's saying. Yeah. Okay. We do not have fundraising involvement update because Chris was unable to make it. Do we have a education committee update?
Yeah, so just as a reminder.
Yeah, so, just as a reminder, the committee decided not to meet during the summer until in August. We ended up not meeting in September, October, or either because some things were more out of the plane personally. And so, we scheduled our meeting for December 8th and held it there. The, the agenda of the meeting was, one, to review the presentation that the education committee, or I have made on behalf of the education committee, to the board in March and in May. And so, you may recall that we had talked about some challenges that the committee felt was facing, and some focus areas, and some questions that it was, some questions to explore. I won't repeat all those, but the questions had to do, rather than put forward a set of recommendations to the board, with the education committee put forward a series of questions that it recommended that the board explore, and specifically, what is the board's role with regard to effectiveness of the charter and academic program success in those educational areas? You may remember that I had made the point that the board has some awareness of its responsibility around governance, obviously, and around finance in terms of organizational liability. But in terms of the academic program, as a board, probably did not, probably did not come to decisions on what it, what its role was with regard to academic program success and effectiveness to the charter. A second agenda item was for us to start preparing as an education committee for the board's strategic planning meeting. If you remember, the board's reaction to the education committee's presentation was to want to continue the conversation. And in light of that, we had started talking about, seeing if there was some framework that we might offer up to the board in terms of distinguishing between its proper governance role versus management operation, or its proper governance role with regard to academic program success and effectiveness to the charter. And so, we started some discussions along those lines. A third agenda item for the education committee was goals for the coming year. And I mention that because the education committee had also asked as part of its briefing for guidance from the board on what it felt the education committee might do in the coming year in order to support the board's proper governance role with regard to academic program success and effectiveness to the charter. Some of that might include, for example, doing, for lack of a better word, some training of the board trustees, which might involve some awareness around some of the regulatory aspects of this. An example of this is that the, there is a document from Dees called Charter School Performance Criteria that gets issued, I guess, every year. And it lays out what the Dees, or the way Dees evaluates the performance of the charter school with regard to effectiveness to the charter in four key areas, mission, key design elements, access and equity, compliance and dissemination. And then, how it evaluates the charter school's performance with regard to academic program success, which would be student, three areas, student performance, program delivery, and culture and family engagement. And, you know, clearly, there are things that are proper management and operations responsibility in that area, but the board also has a role to play. You know, an example of that, you know, would be this discussion that we had a little earlier in terms of how we felt as though the use of AP exams and AP classes fit along with our mission to celebrate, a celebration of knowledge, just as an example. So, we ended up having, I thought, a pretty good meeting, pretty good discussion on that. We are going to continue that discussion at our next meeting on January 12th, which will give us hopefully an opportunity to come to some conclusion on that. Who then, obviously, the board then has its strategic planning meeting, and then the board, excuse me, the education committee will meet next, on February 8th, 9th, perhaps to continue that discussion. I think that's it.
Ken, you mentioned three areas, student performance, culture and family engagement, what was the third? Or the middle one?
Three areas under academic program success would be student performance, program delivery, culture and family engagement.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for Ken? We'll have more meat on that one in the planning meeting as well. Okay, so as I mentioned, the finance committee, Tom is not here. But you have financials through the month of October, they tend to be, you know, it's only three months of the year, so. There's no change in overall forecast to the budget at this time? There's no change in the forecast to the overall budget at this time? And, oh, one final, I should have done this in chair business, I should have appointed Lucy to the finance committee officially, because now you are a trustee, so I'm going to appoint you to the finance committee now. Yes. All right. So we do have an executive session to discuss pending litigation, and we will invite Dr. McCleary to join us, and we will not come back in open session. Okay, so, you roll call vote to close point of executive session? All right, off we go. Thank you.